This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, January 17th. The council has 14 members and one vacant seat at the moment. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at more or less 10 o'clock. We're viewed on Channel 35, and we are available by council phone. And one day soon, we hope we will have simultaneous translation services, but we don't have them yet. Call the roll, madam.
Bernsen, Chick, Fier, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pajeco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Vornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the forum, Madam President.
Before we start the agenda, I want to recognize Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Madam President, members, we have with us today Mr. James Blumquist of the Sierra Club. And Dr. James Mays, you all know him, he was out here saying that we should not smoke, and whatever the resources we receive, we should disseminate it to the community so they can teach the youngsters not to take on such bad habits. But this is a good habit. What the Sierra Club has done is donated to 1,000 low-energy bulbs, energy-efficient light bulbs, that can conserve energy. Not only will it do that, it'll sort of educate the user of the bulb, that this is the way to go, this is the trend of the future. And when you buy a light bulb, buy one of these. Now, Dr. Mays will tell you, if every home has one bulb, and he'll give you the exact number, how much energy would save, and how many homes you could be illuminated per day, per year. This light bulb, the one they gave me, this weekend, I will be with Dr. Mays and Mr. Blumquist, and go to a senior citizen home, someone who's on a fixed income, who cannot no longer afford the utility bills as they are because of that deregulation bill they passed in Sacramento, and present it to her or him. Also, Mr. President, there are people who are on other sources of fixed incomes and just cannot afford the lights. Dr. Mays will show you that you have a breathing machine, and you have an EKG machine that may be on, and in the doctor's office, and then you have a black eye, or a brown eye, and what that's going to do to health care and to the quality of life in our community is yet to be told. We are in a tragic situation right now, and we just can't thank the Sierra Club enough for always stepping up to the plate to help us out in a time of need. So I'm going to introduce first to speak Mr. James Blumquist of the Sierra Club, who gave us this donation.
Thank you, Councilman Holden. Two weeks ago, I saw James Mays, Dr. James Mays, on television here in Los Angeles, saying that he thought that the citizens of South Central needed some help in saving energy during this energy crisis. And I realized that I could bring something to that equation, because last year, the Sierra Club distributed 2,000...
All right, we're ready. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, January 17th. The council has fourteen members and one vacant seat at the moment. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at more or less ten o'clock. We're viewed on Channel 35, and we are available by council phone. And one day soon, we hope, we will have simultaneous translation services, but we don't have them yet. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Bernsen, Chik, Fuhr, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Podejko, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Vornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the forum, Madam President.
All right. Before we start the agenda, I want to recognize Mr. Holden for a presentation. Don't drop them, those are valuable.
Madam President and members, we have with us today Mr. James Blumquist of the Sierra Club. And Dr. James Mays, you all know him, he was out here saying that we should not smoke, and whatever the resources we receive, we should disseminate it to the community so they can teach the youngsters not to take on such bad habits. But this is a good habit. What the Sierra Club has done is donated to 1,000 low-energy bulbs, energy-efficient light bulbs that can conserve energy. Not only will it do that, it'll sort of educate the user of the bulb that this is the way to go, this is the trend of the future. And when you buy a light bulb, buy one of these. Now, Dr. Mays will tell you, if every home has one bulb, and he'll give you the exact number, how much energy would save and how many homes you could be illuminated per day, per year. This light bulb, the one they gave me, this weekend, I will be with Dr. Mays and Mr. Blumquist, and go to a senior citizen home, someone who's on a fixed income, who cannot no longer afford the utility bills as they are because of that deregulation bill they passed in Sacramento, and present it to her or him. Also, Mr. President, there are people who are on other sources of fixed incomes and just cannot afford the lights. Dr. Mays will show you that you have a breathing machine, and you have an EKG machine that may be on, and in a doctor's office, and then you have a blackout, a brownout. And what that's going to do to healthcare and to the quality of life in our community is yet to be told. We are in a tragic situation right now, and we just can't thank the Sierra Club enough for always stepping up to the plate to help us out in a time of need. So I'm going to introduce first to speak Mr. James Blumquist of the Sierra Club, who gave us this donation.
Give him a hand.
Thank you, Councilman Holden. Two weeks ago, I saw James Mays, Dr. James Mays, on television here in Los Angeles, saying that he thought that the citizens of South Central needed some help in saving energy during this energy crisis. And I realized that I could bring something to that equation, because last year, the Sierra Club distributed 2,000 compact fluorescent light bulbs in Los Angeles in low-income communities on Earth Day. It's something that every citizen can do to actually do something about energy instead of just talking about it. It's something that can deliver real change in a very short period of time. On Saturday and Sunday, Dr. James Mays' organization will be distributing these light bulbs in South Central. On Monday, the utilities of California will see a savings. Now, that's something that brings real solutions to an energy problem that we have. Each one of these light bulbs is on sale right now at IKEA for only $2.77, but that light bulb could be worth as much as $320 to a consumer buying electricity like they were buying it in San Diego last summer. This is very cost-effective. This is the strategy that this city and this state should follow right now. This is the way we can do more for more people, particularly low-income people, than we can in talking about big energy bailouts. And I salute Dr. James Mays and his work, and we will be helping him on Saturday and Sunday distribute these bulbs. And I urge the council to think about this as a strategy that you could employ here yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just take a second to note that our Department of Water and Power actually distributes bulbs like this for exactly that reason. No, let's not have a debate about it. We have some more speakers.
Okay, fine. I'm going to be very brief. I'm going to just say this because it's very important. As a physician, I think it is essential, particularly our practicing in South Central Los Angeles, and we've been before you before, about the tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. And we want to thank all the council members for your aid. Now, this is very important, because the people will not be able to pay for increased in utility bills, particularly electricity at this time. The nine percent is too much, so they're going to increase it even more so, particularly people that require electricity for their emergency situations. This breathing machine requires electricity in order for it to function. You see here? In order to do a heart trac, you must have electricity. What we're saying is that these compact fluorescent light bulbs may not represent a panacea, but surely a good shot of penicillin that's most definitely needed at this particular time. We are going to pass out these light bulbs as a symbol, as a motivator, to get people to reduce their electrical energy usage, because we feel, particularly in South Central Los Angeles, that we must do this for our own survival, not particularly for the governor whom we support, and not definitely for the utility companies, but we are doing this for our own survival, to reduce our electrical energy costs for our survival. And we're asking you, the city council, to consider using these for complex fluorescent light bulbs in city buildings, because you can show the example to the city and to the nation. And we want to thank Councilman Nate Holden, who's always been there for us. And Nate, I know we have an agenda, so thank you so very much.
Just don't turn the juice off. I might need to breathe.
That's right.
We'll run it on a compact fluorescent. Actually, I use them. They're really a great thing. You can run your front door light all night long for about a penny. Thank you, Mr. Holden. All right, Madam Clerk, first item.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Those are approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requesting to be continued. Items three and four, applicant requests continuance to May 16th.
May 16th, all right. Items three and four, any objections to that? Okay, those are continued to May 16th.
Item 28, a request to continue that to Tuesday, January 23rd.
All right, item 28 is continued. And did we have, was it 26?
On the regular agenda, item number 17 is confirmation of city official, confirmation of Mark Lee to the Emergency Preparedness Commission for the term ending November 16, 2004.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the council, item 17. Comments, questions? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Congratulations. Get back to work, yes.
On the regular agenda, item number one, item notice for public hearing. The council should close the public hearing and then continue that item for one week to January 24th.
But we closed the hearing. All right, we don't have any cards on it. So on item number one, the public hearing will be closed, and we're continuing it until the 24th, which is one week from today. Next.
Item number two is a public hearing, and there's also an ordinance on the file.
All right, we have not enough people here to pass an ordinance today. We do have somebody who wants to be heard. Okay, we may have 12 later on. Why don't we hold that for the moment and see if we have the 12? We'll let the gentleman speak at the same time as we're going to vote. And, okay, so let's hold two on the desk and go to...
Item number five has a card, and I believe there's going to be an amending motion on that.
Okay, we have an amending motion, but we'll hear first from Mr. Charles Porter. Item five.
Good morning, council members. My name is Charles Porter, and I work with United Coalition East Prevention Project. The United Coalition East Prevention Project is dedicated to improving the quality of life in Central City East, or the Skid Row area, by reducing alcohol and other drug-related problems. We have a community monitoring team that has been periodically observing area businesses, including the Simone Hotel, over the past three months to ensure that nuisance activity previously observed and documented at this location has been ameliorated. We have not observed any nuisance activity during the last 90 days and attribute this improvement to increased responsibility on behalf of the Simone Hotel management. We feel this is a direct result of the nuisance abatement process, imposed conditions, and efforts of Central City East community members to persuade the city to take action to improve this long-neglected community. Our coalition will continue to monitor area businesses, document nuisance activity, and work with the city in efforts to improve the quality of life in Central City East. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walters, that closes the public hearing. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. The amending motion is relative to the nuisance abatement appeal for the Simone Hotel at 520 San Julian Street. We want to acknowledge and accept the commitment made by Skid Row Housing Trust to implement and abide by the 15 voluntary operating conditions that are attached to this motion in the maintenance of the Simone Hotel. I move adoption of this and would hope that it's unanimous. As the gentleman indicated, over the last 90 days, with monitoring of what has been going on, I think they've really done a lot to clean up their act, and I would move this.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to call the council's attention to this case. I know that the council is aware that there were a series of cases where we initiated nuisance abatement acts and had the planning department hold hearings through the zoning administrator's office in this particular area at the request of the East Area Coalition, as well as the Skid Row Housing area. And this is a success story. This was one that had been run not well, did come up under nuisance abatement process, but it's an area where the community got involved with the property, attempted to take over the property through the Skid Row Housing Corporation, and really run a hotel that is needed in the area, a place where families who are desperate for housing can find housing, a place where intervention can occur and programs can occur to help people get back on their feet. And I just wanted to call it to everyone's attention, because I think we hear very often, folks, operators of these hotels, saying it can't be done. And this is an area to show where it can be done, in cooperation with some of the same people who had the concerns about it not being done well. And that's why I was happy to second this motion by Councilmember Walters, and the recommendation of the Plumb Committee was to not further impose corrective conditions mandatorily, because voluntarily, it has worked. And this case has been held for a number of months to have proof, to show that there was a track record where the new operators could commit, could work it out, and could provide a haven here, which I think hopefully can be the models for all the others. So I'm happy to support this motion and ask the council's endorsement.
Thank you. There being nobody else, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Yes, we'll assume the amendment was incorporated unless anyone has any objection to that. Okay, that was item five. We're getting closer to having the 12 votes for an ordinance, so I'm going to hold on a little longer on item two, and then we'll come back to it as soon as we have 12 votes. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items six through 16, items six, seven, eight are ordinances.
According to this, so is nine, and so is...
Nine is a 10-vote ordinance.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, all right. So we'll hold six, seven, and eight on the desk, and then that leaves us nine through 16. We do have a card on item 16. Actually, we have several cards on item 16. Let's hold item 16 and call that special. Special on item 14, special on item 16. Any other specials? Six through 16. Okay, open the roll on nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 38.
All right, we have cards on 20, a card on 20...
Madam Chair, could we be forthwith on item 15, the plans and recommendation we just voted on?
Certainly, forthwith on item 15. We have cards on 27, so we'll call that special. 31, special, Mr. Fuhr. Any other specials? Where are we here? We're doing 17 through, 18 through 30... Uh, yes. Is that the one I just had the amendment on? Which one is ours? 38 has an amendment. Yeah, okay, 36, we'll call special. And 38, there's an amendment coming, so let's just hold that for the amendment. So that leaves... Now, 18 and 19? We'll hold 18 and 19 on the desk, so we have 20 through 26, 29, 30, 32 through 35, and 37. Any specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those, somewhere in there, I should have mentioned, the public hearing is closed. We didn't have any cards on those. Okay, that brings us to... What are you slipping in there? Okay.
Item two has an ordinance. Do we should take item number 14? That would be the next item.
I believe so, and we have... Now, this is an item where we have held a public hearing. I also have a number of cards, Mr. Fuhr. You called this special?
Item 14?
Well, we have four people who want to be heard.
Oh, let's hear them first.
Okay, so we did have a public hearing previously. But as long as, all right. Any objection to a public hearing? Let's start with a five-minute hearing and see what we need. First, this is item 14. Julia Botello, Guadalupe Gonzalez, Francisco Duñez, and Ty Glenn. Pull the mic down where you can reach it.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Guadalupe Gonzalez. Soy del grupo comunitario Acorn.
My name is Francisco Duñez. I'm also with the community group Acorn, and I'll be translating for Lupita.
Somos Acorn, somos un grupo de vecinos que estamos uniéndonos para mejorar nuestras comunidades.
Okay. She says, "We're Acorn, and we're a group of community members from our low- and moderate-income neighborhoods that are banding together to improve our neighborhoods."
Estamos aquí porque queremos que ustedes nos escuchen sobre el problema de vivienda que tenemos pues los de bajos recursos.
She says, "We're here today to speak on the housing crisis in Los Angeles, especially for moderate and low-income people."
Nosotros les pedimos que miren nuestros problemas. No tenemos, como quien dice, lugares donde vivir. Los lugares en donde estamos viviendo están en muy mal estado. Tenemos, o sea, problemas con que las edificaciones están casi cayéndose.
She's saying that the housing crisis is very serious, especially for low- and moderate-income people, that families are two to three families in one apartment building, and especially the quality of the housing is very low.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Julia Botello, latina mexicana, y vengo a exponer también mis motivos. Yo he visto en mi barrio, en mi comunidad, que hay casas donde viven tres familias, siete niños, y es injusto que las criaturas vivan así, un solo baño, esperando los niños, que salga otro niño para poder entrar al baño. Y yo quisiera que, por favor, nos hicieran viviendas baratas para que viva una familia sola.
Briefly translated, her name is Julia Botello. She's also a community member from Los Angeles, moderate and low-income neighborhood. She's talking about how in her neighborhood, there are sometimes two to three families that live in one apartment with seven children, childrens waiting to use for one single bathroom. And she's saying how it's very unjust for all these families to have to live on top of each other.
Somos pobres, pero como a mí especialmente, me gusta vivir honestamente, cómodamente, como todo mundo, y somos humanos. Pues me vine de México, porque yo me vine a este país, porque dije este país es el más rico, y voy a tener las comunidades, claro, trabajando, pero yo espero que nos ayuden y nos hagan viviendas baratas para que podamos vivir confortable y cómodamente.
Briefly, she's saying that she's an immigrant of humble origins, but she came to this country because she felt it was one of the richest. She thought, you know, the United States is one of the richest countries, and that she came here, and that she feels that it's very, that even though she might be of humble origins, that she liked to live cleanly and decently. And that's the reason she's here to talk today about the housing crisis and the need for more housing for low- and moderate-income families.
Lo que queremos pedirles es que la ciudad tiene una ley de que cada constructor que construye le dé cierta porcentaje de viviendas para bajos recursos. Entonces, queremos que implementen esa ley.
Okay, finally, what Lupita is saying, she's talking about what we're here today to talk about. And that's to establish an inclusionary zoning ordinance that would require residential housing developers to set aside a certain percentage of their housing units for low- and moderate-income people. That's usually around 15%.
Sabemos que la ciudad hizo un fondo de vivienda, pero si ese fondo de vivienda no tiene dinero, cómo vamos a tener ese dinero para construir casas baratas? O sea, casas para personas de bajos recursos. Entonces, si los constructores no quieren construir casas para personas de bajos recursos, que den dinero para ese fondo para que de ahí se pueda construir las casas.
What Lupita is talking about is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that the L.A. City has set up. And she is saying that setting up this inclusionary zoning ordinance would be a way of providing an ongoing funding stream to this housing fund. She's talking about how it makes no sense to set up a housing trust fund, that no money is being put into, especially for... is being put into, especially for low and moderate income families.
Okay, we need to, we need to wrap this up so I can let Ty Glenn speak as well.
Gracias.
Gracias to you.
Have a nice day para todos.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ty Glenn, legal aid.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for taking time out to hear me. I'm an attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles Housing Improvement Project. My goal is to get rid of all those slums that everyone's living in here in Los Angeles. And I probably want to know, what's that got to do with the housing element? Well, it's got a lot to do with the housing element, because the housing element is about producing affordable housing. That's what it's supposed to do. And if there were more affordable housing, people would not be living in the horrible conditions that they are, in the life-threatening conditions that we so recently saw actually end up in tragedy in Echo Park. There are a lot of problems with this housing element. You've received many letters with comments on the housing element from myself, from the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing, and other groups interested in affordable housing. They were submitted to the Planning Department, they were submitted to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and so I will briefly go over some of the highlights of those letters so as not to take up all your time. But what I want you to think about as I go through the more boring details of the problem with the housing element is that the housing crisis in the city of Los Angeles is getting worse and worse and worse. I was here nine months ago and talked to you about the terrible conditions my clients are living in, and they haven't gotten any better since then. You can see how bad the housing crisis is by the high rates of severe overcrowding. I've got eight people living in single apartments. They don't do that by choice. They do that because they can't afford to live anywhere else. They can't find a single decent place to live in this city that they can afford. And they're not even getting good conditions in that single unit. The plumbing doesn't work, their children are lead-poisoned from the paint and the dust in the building, their basements are flooded, maybe weakening the foundation, et cetera. The crisis continues to get worse. If you look up at the Silicon Valley, you'll see that it actually could get worse here if you don't do something about it. There, you can tell by the prices and the conditions and the fact that basically no one, except for the rich, can afford to live there anymore, that this could happen to the city of Los Angeles. Between June 30th of 1998 and July 1st of 1999, the city's population increased by 65,000 people, but less than 2,000 new units were built. If you assume three people per household, that's roughly one unit for every 11 families. So you see where the housing crisis is coming from and why people are living in those overcrowded, terrible conditions. There are actual problems with the housing element. It's not in compliance with the law, and if you don't send it to the city attorney...
No, I'm anxious to hear this.
Okay, if you don't send it to the city attorney to have it reviewed for its legal compliance, I think you might find out that Sacramento recognizes that it's not in legal compliance. You're supposed to identify potential sites to create housing or housing element. This housing element does not provide the inventory that is required by law. State law requires the city to analyze any governmental constraints to housing development for all income groups and identify the steps it's going to take to remove those constraints. The city identified a number of governmental constraints, but it fails to propose any solutions. We know we have problems. Where are the solutions? Most of the programs listed in Chapter Five of the housing element do not actually contain goals with specific numbers of units that are going to be created. That's required by law. And the programs that are there do not appear to even come close to meeting the need described right there in the housing element. I mean, the housing element admits, "We have a big crisis, we have a big, big need for affordable housing," but it doesn't even actually address specifically how it's going to accomplish that in the housing element. Here's an example. Objective 1.1 calls for encouraging production and preservation of an adequate supply of rental and ownership housing. We can all agree we need that. To meet the identified needs, which everyone agrees we have, it sets absolutely no goals to meet the needs, to solve that problem. Policy 1.1.8 calls for encouraging and supporting programs to increase the availability of affordable rental housing for all city residents, and it actually lists 11 different programs, which sounds good, until you look at it and realize that most of these programs that are listed are not production programs. They have to do with housing, but they're not production programs. For example, the rent control ordinance is included. That's about preserving affordable housing. It's not about producing affordable housing. We can't just preserve what we got. It's slowly trickling away. We've got to create new affordable housing so people can stop living in these conditions. Finally, by agreeing with this housing element and not sending it back to be redrafted and brought into compliance with the law, the city is exposing itself to litigation. Under state law, Los Angeles should have an approved housing element in place by the end of last year. All the planning decisions made are supposed to conform with that housing element, and if you're not in compliance with state law, then any commercial, industrial, park, school, or other development can be stopped by litigation. Every time someone tries to do some development here, people could just litigate and say, "You don't have housing element that's in compliance, sorry." That may work for stopping some development that shouldn't happen, but it also will stop the good development. It's going to stop exactly what this housing element is supposed to accomplish, which is the creation of affordable housing. So people like my clients, people who are living in conditions that I don't believe any of you have stepped inside of for a really long time, I walk through and see floors caving in in bathrooms, basements flooded. By fixing the housing element, you're going to allow development of affordable housing so that the housing crisis in the city can be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, that closes the public hearing. Mr. Fuhr is first.
Thank you, Madam President. As the speakers have noted, we do have a housing crisis, and we are working, and unfortunately, at... A little bit of quiet, please. At a pace that isn't fast enough to deal with it. We do have a series of reports that are coming in to a committee chaired by our colleague, Mr. Pacheco, on how to create an inclusionary zoning ordinance and other issues relating to a fee on commercial development to help create more affordable housing, because with those jobs comes a need for housing close by. Those reports are due to be submitted to the city council inner about the beginning of June. Ideally, those reports will trigger a new source of revenue for the housing trust fund, as the first speaker from Acorn recommended be the case. But that's only one aspect of a much broader problem, because we won't have enough money to infuse into a housing trust fund to adequately address this problem. I want to propose an idea, but before I do that, I'd like to actually move that consideration of this matter be continued for a week, the purpose of which is to get specific answers from the city attorney, planning, and other relevant agencies to some of the questions that have been raised regarding the adequacy of the housing element from the standpoint of housing production and other issues that have been put before us. So I think we're not ready to actually vote on this today until those questions are answered, but only for a week, because we have to get a housing element. The idea I wanted to propose for consideration when that report comes back to us, if the council agrees to that continuance, is this. Among the proposals made by one of the environmental organizations commenting on this is that we create a task force that, and I think it's a good idea, and I'm going to move that we include this, a task force to develop a specific strategy that pulls together a bunch of concrete sites in the city, real sites, packages them together, creates a task force of builders and city planning experts and housing people and environmental people and so forth, and asks, "How can we expedite creating housing that is affordable to our lowest-income people on these sites?" And consider things like specific zoning changes to make those sites a reality, consider some possible changes in sequent, maybe a programmatic EIR for all of them, rather than specific EIRs that would slow down the process. Because I think what the speakers have asked for, and what many of us in the council are searching for, are very tangible ways to actually, specifically, in our lifetimes, create affordable housing. Housing doesn't exist now, and it goes beyond some of the broad strategies that are generally alluded to in the housing element. So I'll make that motion to set up that task force, to come back with a very specific series of sites, and how we can go about getting affordable housing there right now, even as I move that we continue the matter for a week, for a report on that and other issues that have been raised. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, let me just point out that if you're only continuing it for a week, you're not going to get all those other task force recommendations.
I've opened to a continuance of somewhat longer. I just want to be sure we get it done.
No, 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 but I mean, you're not going to get... There's no way in a week you're going to be able to get all those sites identified recommendations on sequel changes.
To be clear, I wasn't asking that the task force report be in, but merely that we get a report on the creation of the task force with timelines within which they do their work.
Okay. And as part of... That's separate from sending the existing draft to the city attorney with the concerns that have been raised.
Ideally, it will come back as an amendment to the element, along with other questions being...
All right, I just want to be clear on that. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I don't have a problem with continuing this issue for a week, it's just that I don't know what we accomplished in that week. What's before us is some proposed amendments to our element, and I want to argue that our reality is, our housing element is better than the county's. Ours is better than the region's, because we're dealing, trying to deal with a crisis. Part of the problem when people look at the city of Los Angeles is they think we're the region, and they come after us first. I've been trying to argue for more housing throughout the city of Los Angeles, but the reality is I'm impeded by the fact that the city of Glendale is not doing their fair share of housing, by the fact that Burbank is not doing their fair share of housing. When I go over to SCAG and I listen to the regional debates, the reality is they're sitting there saying, "Why in San Bernardino are we building housing and we're not getting the jobs? Why are all the jobs being limited to Los Angeles?" And what we need to understand is that a basic component to planning should be job-housing balance, and how do we get there? And the way we have had to get there is an inch at a time, but every time we create a fund for housing, we are exacerbating our problem because everybody competes to live in our housing. The city of Glendale just recently offered $50,000 relocation cost to its tenants when they were trying to push the Disney Center. And in doing that, they admitted, and their tenants admitted, that they couldn't find any housing in Glendale. So where'd they move to? Los Angeles. And what was Los Angeles doing? Trying to build low-income housing for its residents. And we basically lose out. Our residents lose out, and we get more residents, and our infrastructure of schools and parks is impacted. The reason I say we continue to move forward is because we need to continue to amend this element, and we need to continue to find solutions. But they shouldn't be limited to the city of Los Angeles. They have to be solutions that go countywide. They have to be solutions that deal region-wide. You know, when I argued, for example, that DreamWorks should be placed in the inner city, in the industrial zone land, it was because we had room to do it there, and we should be working for that job-housing balance. At the same time, I understood why the DreamWorks people wanted to move to Playa Vista, because that's where their homes were, and that was part of job-housing balance. But it created a different kind of synergy. So to me, we have the best we've been able to do today, and what that means is it's not good enough, and we have to continue to amend it. And so I would just ask us to vote on what's before us today, to continue the Nexus studies that we're doing with the housing department in terms of trying to find funding resources for additional housing, to continue to do our work to try and impact the region in terms of them being accountable, because they're out of compliance right now in the regional housing needs assessment, which will impact us, and to continue to try and get our neighbors to do their fair share of housing. It's not just Los Angeles's problem, but because we're... And yesterday, I spoke to a member of a basically environmental group who said, "But Los Angeles is the big gorilla. Los Angeles is the city, and that's why we go after you." And I'm like sitting there saying, "No, this is a housing crisis that's impacting all of us, not just the city of Los Angeles in this state of California." It was a problem we had in 1990, and after the year 2000 census, we're going to find out it's a greater problem, and we've lost ground. And so I just ask us to move forward with what's before us and to continue to work to amend it and make the changes that have to be made, but it has to come from a wider perspective, not just the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Ms. Chik.
Yes, I really appreciate hearing those comments from my colleague, but I was prepared to extend this for at least a week. I think I've heard the city attorney hasn't looked at it yet, and because of the shortage of affordable housing, I think we need to move forward on this with great care if we're doing any cutting back, as was mentioned by our public speakers. And it's not only affordable housing for the working poor, for low-income, shelters for the homeless, but colleagues, I think most of us are also aware that we have a need for affordable, single-family homes, for first-time buyers, for young families trying to get started and to own property, rather than continuing to rent for the rest of their lives. I'm going to be very interested to hear, because I think this is going to have that short, one-week delay, how our general plan framework housing element also connects to bonus density and any other incentives that are here at the local level or state incentives. I think we also need to, and I'm not looking necessarily to the planning department for this, but to hear about Fannie Mae incentives and other programs that talk more about financing than they do about zoning and land use codes. So colleagues, I look forward to having this back so that we can all, in a very thoughtful way, move forward in exactly what Mr. Hernandez is saying, and I think in terms of the regional planning, that we have to partner with, with SCAG and the county, but we have to make sure that the city of Los Angeles is doing it in the best possible way. I was going to ask for our planning staff to speak to us, but I think if we get this in a thoughtful package for next week, we might be able to do it better. Thank you.
Ms. Hikowski.
Thank you, Madam President. There's no question that this is a huge issue, and it's a huge crisis. In fact, we had, based on Mr. Fuhr's motion in November 1999, a housing crisis task force specifically of business, community representatives, staff, builders, and the like. That task force report was issued in last year, and it was just titled "In Short Supply", which we all know. The Housing Crisis Task Force in 2000 made four recommendations, that the city take immediate action to establish a housing trust fund with dedicated sources of revenue. We did that. Not very much, but we did that and we started. To develop a comprehensive strategy to preserve existing affordable housing. To some degree, we've done that, particularly with our code enforcement and our annual inspections, which has now been successful and upheld, to make sure that we can keep our existing housing preserved, and we've taken steps in other areas on specific instances. Items three and four, I don't think we did quite as well. Create more affordable homeownership opportunities through innovative land use and make the city user-friendly with information about housing, building, zoning, and planning. I think those two recommendations are the ones where Mr. Fuhr in talking about really give some concrete ideas to some specific programs, some specific sites, might make sense to really not really create a new housing task force. We don't need that. We've got this information, we've done it, and what we really need to do is take the tools that are in this housing element, like density bonus, like what we did, members of the council, with the Vermont Neighborhood Area Station Plan, which said, "There is going to now be fixed fees and associated interest with some new innovative ideas, with mixed housing in our commercial corridors." The truth is, as this report identifies, one of the elements that is of concern in this report is that the planning department didn't do a good enough job in identifying where this housing can go. Our housing task force told us that the reason that was done is because the city is nearly built out, and suitable land parcels for land on housing are so scarce that construction is nearly ceased. We don't have available land, except that land that already is developed. How do we take that land back and make it, provide better housing and use it in a better way? I agree that we need to continue this. I think Mr. Hernandez is right, that we've done it, we've done it with SCAG, we have regional housing needs assessment, where we are battling with SCAG, because our regional neighbors are not accepting the housing that they should, that... And again, we're the big giants, so people come at us. We are doing better than all the others, but we are still all failing. However, I do think that the request that the city attorney look at this, since there has been information, the city attorney was not... has been information the city attorney was not closely consulted, and we have had that issue raised, we do need the city attorney to look at us and see how we coordinate this with the SCAG Regional Housing Needs Assessment, with our housing task force recommendations, and really pull it together. But, members of the council, we've got to move forward. The housing element, the housing crisis task force, say what the problem is. We've got to start finding and making solutions. And I think instead of trying to do it on a broad level, we have to do it on a pilot project, innovative, let's get some things that work, show those as the models to work in the future. But I think we do need the city attorney's advice right now in having to pull it together.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, and colleagues, I think before we get ahead of ourselves and start creating more committees, one of the most important things that we have before us is an opportunity to fund the affordable, the housing trust fund. So at this point, I'm going to pitch you all again that all these pilot programs are going to need funding, and so I have a motion out there that deals with the central business district's tax increment money that's going to be going to the general fund. At this point, I would really challenge you all, if we're going to make any dent in this problem, that we need to support the motion, get that money into the housing trust fund. If we get that $10 million and the other $5 million that we committed last year to the housing trust fund, we can really get some of these programs going. The, and I really believe that that's the starting point in solving this problem. We really need to focus on this, and that's why we did form the Housing Crisis Task Force Committee, mainly because we brought in planning, we brought in the other people from housing, community development, and different members from the council as a team to look at this so that we have a comprehensive approach to this problem and not have it piecemeal. So today, I would simply say that the direction that my colleague, Councilmember Hernandez, suggested that we adopt the housing element, understand that it's open for modification based on how we handle the global view of this problem, is the approach that I think we should take today. But most importantly, I'm going to stress that all of this is going to be for naught if we don't have cash available to get these programs going. So for me, the most important thing is that we get the housing trust fund funded and a part of next year's budget, so I want to take this opportunity to remind you that the motion's out there, and I need your support.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, we all know we need more affordable housing because we have many more people in the city of L.A. and the surrounding areas, Mr. Hernandez has already stated. But then, we also have people in the city of L.A. who says, "No more in my backyard." Now, we've had some CRA, Community Redevelopment Areas, established in some parts of the city where they would provide for more affordable housing, where they now do not have a compatible number as it compares to other districts, and that action was rescinded. So because of the protests. Now, when you start bringing more people in, the people who've been there already are going to do just that, protest. They're going to protest because they don't have enough schools, as Mr. Hernandez stated, enough parks, recreation facilities, or another, any of the other infrastructure that's required in order to accommodate the influx. So we have to seriously come to grip and bite the bullet based on providing that for which is needed. And I know it's nice to make a nice speech here to say, "Let's do this tomorrow, and let's look at it. We should have looked at it yesterday." But yesterday, we did look at it, and yesterday, we did get the protest. And when you provide for this, you're going to get the protest again. Not too long ago, we had some units that were going to be removed, and we made it a historical monument site. We have the historical overlay zone, historical overlay zone, where you mean you can no longer there, without the consent of the residents, build additional affordable housing. And those overlay zones are coming up all over the city, they're just growing up, and which therefore means that you're locking out any opportunity to provide for additional affordable housing. And that's understandable. I know in my district, some neighborhoods were destroyed when I tried to stop demolition of single-family homes at that time because of the zoning, and come to some agreement that if you're going to build additional affordable housing in the area, that they have to meet certain requirements and setbacks, which reduced the number of affordable housing units you put into the area, and that argument was raised by the people there. Hey, everybody's not going to be happy. I guess when it gets right down to it, you bite the bullet and do what you can, but we do know we need affordable housing. The sooner we adopt the plan, the better.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to clarify my motion. In addition to just a one-week continuance, it's to get a report on how we can create, not a recreation of the housing crisis task force we have, but rather a small group whose charge would be identify a package of specific sites in the city and tell us what tools from the housing element and beyond we should employ to create within a specific timeframe actual affordable housing at these sites. The tools that we can employ could include anything from zoning changes to a project EIR rather than site-specific ones, but the point is to build what we have in general and make it very concrete at specific sites.
Okay, what's before us is Mr. Fuhrer's motion to continue this for a week and also ask for this other report. Open the roll on that motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that's approved, and we'll be back in a week. Now, we do have 12 members, and we may lose some, so let's go back and do the ordinances, and we'll start with item two. We had a gentleman who wished to address us, Jim Yarborough. Pick the mic up, you'll be much happier.
My concerns about the final environmental impact report regarding the development at Roscoe and Valley Circle, area called Dayton Canyon. It's my understanding that this EIR is based on an incomplete archaeological survey. This proposed development would violate city ordinances, I think legally, but certainly in spirit, which established Valley Circle Boulevard in that area as a scenic corridor. This proposed development would substantially degrade the Dayton Canyon area as a significant ecological area, and overall, there's already too much traffic and air pollution in the West Valley, and in short, this development would degrade quality of life in the West Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Walters, did you want to be heard on this one? Somehow, your name is up here. No. Okay, sorry, I don't, you never know when the machine is doing something weird. There we go. Okay. Okay, item two is before us. Members of the council, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that's approved. Next item.
Hey, the next ordinances are six, seven, eight, and 18 and 19.
All right. Okay, I have no cards on those, so the public hearings are closed on 18 and 19. We've already held them on six, seven, six, seven, and eight. Members of the council, items six, seven, eight, 18, and 19. Any specials? No. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. We needed forthwith on items 29 and 30. And that brings us to...
Item number 16.
All right, now, just before we do that, Mr. Fuhrer has to leave shortly. You had called item 31 special?
Do it later, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So you don't need to call that special. All right, well, then, let's just do it.
No, Ruth, Ruth, do it after I'm gone.
Okay, all right. All right, next item is, I'm sorry, you said item 16.
Item number 16.
All right, we have a number of cards on item 16. There has already been a public hearing. So Ms. Zickowski, what do you want to do here?
I have a five-minute public hearing.
All right. Without objection, we're going to have a five-minute public hearing, and there are four cards, so you get a minute and a quarter each, in the order in which they came in: Donald Baker, Barbara Borsch, Barbara Dorman, and Patricia Bellhurst.
I'm Donald Baker, representing the Stephen S. Wise Temple. Following the Plum Committee hearing in November, Councilwoman Zickowski insisted upon a process where we could work with the community to develop a workable and enforceable TDM plan, and I believe she's going to present amendments which reflect that effort today. This is able to address the traffic issues on Mulholland and do it in a way that the schools can be successfully operated. She insisted upon various continuances and meetings in order to assure that there was full community input and a plan that could work with the temple and to go forward with something that would resolve those problems. We, I want to say that on behalf of the temple, that we agree with these amendments and will work diligently to implement this plan to address the issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Borsch.
I'm Barbara Borsch, and I am a member of the nearest residential community to the high school, and I am also a member of the traffic advisory, Mulholland Traffic Advisory Committee, which worked with Councilmember Zickowski. And indeed, she did have a great number of meetings with us, and I think those were helpful. We still have concerns, as one might imagine, because there had not been compliance with the previous traffic management program, or demand program, anyway, you know what I mean, all those different, different words, and there hadn't been no compliance with that. So now, here we are, looking at compliance, we hope, and looking at conditions which we hope will bring about compliance. I want to remind the council that when this original CUP was approved by the council, there was a prohibition against any student driving to the school. That was condition number 15. Condition number 15 presented to you now assumes student driving, but limits the number of student car pools which may go into the school. So the assumption is quite the reverse from prior time. Secondly, there are a number of areas where I believe we need to have continued conversation about the measures which would be taken. For example, to assume the compliance, which would be, or to assure the compliance, which would be ways of discovering how the school will implement the conditions exactly, what records are going to be kept, and how the public can reach the traffic coordinator. I think those things are out there, but we need to have more work on that agreement. There's not any incentive here for parents to drop off students at satellite lots, not any real incentive, and so therefore, we need to work on that. Secondly, or thirdly, there is a condition here about a traffic consultant. This traffic consultant will come in and review the traffic plans. It is now presently scheduled in this set of conditions to happen twice a year without specifying that it would be during the school year. I would strongly suggest that we have it three times a year, and that at least two of those times, if not all three, be during the school year, rather than when everyone forgets during the summer or is gone. In that respect also, the traffic consultant is going to be retained by the school. I feel that that is not a good idea, that the traffic consultant should be at least selected and responsible to the council office rather than the school, because then the council, the traffic person would be removed from being a direct employee of the school. In condition 35, we heard in a recent meeting that the nearby Wise Middle School is presently needing to use facilities at the high school on a regularly scheduled basis. My question is, is that additional number of students present on a regular basis in excess of the number of students permitted to use the school?
Ms. Borsch?
Thank you.
We're just about out of time for everybody, so I'm going to ask the next two speakers, if you would please be brief. We'll be a little sloppy about the time here. Ms. Dorman, and then Ms. Hurst.
Thank you very much. I'm Barbara Dorman. Is that better? All right, I'm Barbara Dorman. I'm a resident of Bel Air Skycrest, and also an attorney with some knowledge of the municipal code. And accordingly, I've been asked to speak today on behalf of Lori Kelson of the Encino Hills Homeowners Association, who has actively represented her organization and her community on this matter from the outset. She's unfortunately unable to attend today due to medical concerns. She's on the board of the Encino Community Council and has permission from the president of that organization to have her views read into the record here. And would request your consideration of the following points. More than seven years ago, in considering the original application for a CUP, the traffic on Mulholland was the overriding community concern in this area, where two prior applications for a high school had been turned down on that basis, on the basis of traffic. There are now eight schools located within less than a mile on a narrow, winding road, Mulholland, and this has created a terrible traffic burden. However, to overcome the community's opposition, the school's promoters made three proposals, these were their proposals, and promised that they would abide by these proposals, which eventually became the TDM program. They were no student drivers, remote lots for drop-off and busing to the campus, no left turns onto Mulholland from the school's exit. These three conditions were crucial to the school obtaining its CUP. At the final hearing before approving the CUP, the zoning administrator, Dr. Landini, questioned the school's promoters thoroughly on these matters. Regarding the remote lots, he said, "Do we need a covenant on this?" The school replied, "Oh, no, we'll get the contracts." They identified the locations as the Leobek Temple on the west side and the First Presbyterian Church in the valley. As to no student drivers, Dr. Landini questioned the possibility and practicality of enforcing this requirement on teenage drivers who, of course, love to drive and live to have a car. The Rabbi Zeldin replied, in essence, "If they want to attend our school, they'll follow our rules." And the no-left-turn prohibition was an important safety provision on an otherwise dangerous curve of Mulholland Drive. To my knowledge, none of these crucial conditions were ever enforced by the school, which has remained openly in violation of the CUP and the municipal code for more than seven years. The resulting impact on traffic has ruined the quality of life in our neighborhood and can be clearly tied to the opening of this high school. Although the zoning administrator last June wisely refused the school's application to modify these conditions, he, for some unknown reason, recanted this decision at the Plum Committee hearing, and at the same hearing, the Department of Transportation also withdrew its opposition. However, the newly proposed conditions are not only vague and ambiguous, they have not been published or distributed to the surrounding community, most of whom still believe that the zoning administrator's decision of June 23, 2000 is still in place. There has been no opportunity for a public hearing on these newly proposed conditions at which we would have been able to say, for example, there is no demand for busing, and at least 25% of the students should be required to come on the bus. The monitoring program should be regularly reviewed by an independent inspector. Now, after seven years, we finally have been given the name of the school's transportation coordinator, Steve Kalb, who we understand to also be the school's director of operations.
Ms. Dorman, would it be safe to summarize by saying you're against the proposal?
Ms. Kelson's words basically are that she, they believe. Let me just end with her final paragraph. "It hardly seems like a responsible public service to vote to reward the applicant for its continuing violation of the municipal code by eliminating the very conditions being violated. Please deny the appeal."
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry it took so long, but these are not my words.
No, no, that's okay, but I want to let Ms. Hurst speak, and then we'll be at double the allotted time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'll be very brief. My name is Patricia Bell Hurst. I'm the chairman of the board for the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Association, representing approximately 250,000 homeowners. The Federation has worked for approximately 49 years to preserve and protect the scenic corridor for the city, which encompasses 22 miles from beginning to end. Seven years ago... Seven years ago, this applicant tried to violate the specific plan with a 17-foot variance over the plan, until the Federation said, "You have 48 hours, or we will sue." At that point, they complied. It only took three months to get back to the drawing board. Just a few days ago, the Federation was locked out of a meeting that affects traffic on Mulholland. In attendance was the council member, her staff, applicant, three homeowner representatives, and Latham Watkins, the applicant's attorney. We were disappointed, but not surprised. The Federation is requesting the following: that the amended item number 16F for the traffic consultants' spot checking be responsible for a minimum of three unannounced spot checks for compliance during the school year, which was previously asked. The Federation also requests that the council members send the Federation the monitoring and enforcement plans due March 17, and that the Federation be included in all traffic meetings that affect Mulholland. It's disappointing, but we are hoping that we will have some compliance, starting now for the first time in seven years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing at 11 minutes and 20 seconds, and the chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. As was indicated, we had last year a zoning administrator decision, and that case was appealed on this issue of the high school that is in existence, as it was both being reviewed in terms of compliance with its earlier conditions, and a new request. There is no question that there were violations of the earlier condition. There is no question that there are traffic problems on Mulholland. There are eight institutions in and around Mulholland and Sepulveda that bring cars through there, as well as Mulholland being the crossroads between the valley, particularly the Encino community, which is used as a shortcut, and the Brentwood community, which goes up to this area, through the 405 and Mulholland and Sepulveda. My office did call together members of the Encino Community Council, the Brentwood Community Council, and members of the community who lived in the immediate area. And they had not only worked recently, they had worked over a long term, not only about this school, but on all the schools on Mulholland. We had not only a task force dealing with this particular institution, but the pulling all the schools together and all the other institutions to come up with some comprehensive solutions to deal with the traffic up there. There was a recommendation for a new approach, which would have students, as they drive, parked not at the school, but at these remote areas, so that they don't come through the Mulholland interchange, which is the access to the freeway as well. There's also, for the first time in these conditions, as recommended, as attached to my 16A, as revised, for the first time, accountability, accessibility, and mandatory requirements at the school meet with the associations in the nearby neighborhood, those community members who have been part of this, who are representative of the immediate neighbors, and that is required, that shall be done twice annually, and other than that, the name of the traffic coordinator shall be made available, so that access to the records with specificity. No one will come to the school now, other than in a carpool, an adult carpool, a student carpool, or by bus. The school has instituted busing in both the west side and the valley, and there's shuttle busing among its, its other lots and its other satellites, schools, and other sites. Members of the council, we all know how difficult it is to work with schools, with institutions, and the issue of traffic in neighborhood. I believe this recommendation comes forward with the best balance and the best measures of accountability in getting kids off of those individual cars, driving without control. These will be permitted, spot checked, needing to be at their site with the number of kids in their car, both for the adults and the kids, and, and spot checked by a traffic consultant randomly through the school year. Clearly, any, any traffic consultant that would be hired to do something in the summertime would not be a valid check of all of these conditions. So I believe with that effort, I am asking for the council to approve this. It will be reviewed again by the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator retains the right, as this is being unfolded and worked through, to add additional conditions as necessary to assure and guarantee the details of these conditions as they're specified.
Okay. Anybody else? In that case, open the roll on item 16. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
No, 16, as amended.
There's an amendment? I'm sorry. Right, and, but it's Ms. Misakowski's amendment, right?
Right.
So it's incorporated into the motion, and we'll consider that a unanimous vote. Sorry. Okay, next item.
Item number 27, call special. There's cards from the public on the item.
All right. Item number 27, we have somebody for the proposal, Mr. Cordero. Pull the mic up a little higher. There you go.
Thank you very much. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mario Cordero. I work with EGL Properties. We're a management company. We represent Mr. Callaway, the owner of the property in question. When we took over management of this property, it was under systematic, under the systematic Most of the tenants were not paying rent, and the funds are very limited to get any work done. We have been working for the past few months on securing bids with several contractors. It has also taken Mr. Callaway several months to get a loan commitment from a lender. We have hired a structural engineer to draw plans for the proposed work. We have hired a licensed contractor, and it may take up to 16 weeks to complete all the repairs, which are very costly, and it may also require the tenants to relocate. When you look at the property, it does not have the appearance of a distressed property. We take very good care of it. All the plumbing problems, electrical needs are taken care of. There are no vacancies. We are requesting an extension of 16 weeks to complete all the work and relocate all the tenants, and we have a letter here from the lender, who has committed to lend Mr. Callaway the money. If I could make this available to you. That's basically it. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holden, this one's in your district. And the gentleman has been...
I know, we had the inspector go out. They're in the house today, Inspector. We gave you a week's contingency for the purpose of deciding how much of the work was accomplished, and I've been informed that even though this is an ongoing case, beginning last year, only 20 percent of the work has been done. What's, how do you respond to the fact that more work could have been done and has not been?
Like I said, Mr. Holden, we have been unable to collect any rents. The tenants are not paying.
Oh, in that case, maybe then we have to put it on the REIT program, so they will be forced to pay. You have a dilemma there. You should not oppose to...
No, no, he's not opposing it. He's speaking in favor of it.
Oh, the REIT?
Yes.
Oh, fine, done.
I think we're all on the same side here.
All right. Last time, you told us, hold up, okay...
Actually, I'm speaking for the owner, who would like to have an extension. I don't know if you would allow it, ma'am.
Yeah, no, he asked for a 16-week extension.
To do the work, but he's not getting the money.
And relocate the tenants, and relocate the tenants.
To relocate the tenants.
We have a commitment from a lender here.
Okay, here's what I'm going to suggest.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Yes.
And we're going to hold this item on the desk, and you guys talk for a second.
All right, thank you.
And then, while you're doing that, we're going to go on into the next item, and then we'll bring it back. Okay, next item, I believe, was...
Item number 31.
All right. Mr. Fuhr had called that special. He has left. He said he didn't have a problem with it, so unless anybody else has a problem, open the roll on 31. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Okay? Tabulate the vote, or we doing it again? This voting machine is having a little bit of a temper today.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, all right, there we go. That's approved. Which brings us to item...
36.
36, unless they're, they're not finished yet. All right, item 36. Mr. Freeman, would you like to join us? Yeah, let's do 36 and 38 together. That'll save a little time here. Yes, there's an amending motion on 38. If you don't have it yet, you'll have it in a minute. Gentlemen?
Good morning.
What's going on out there?
Well, we're, as we sit here, the state is in a stage three power emergency. We have ample power supply and adequate reserves, and there is a full-fledged energy crisis in the state, but because of the hard work of our civil servants, and the fact that the city council was wise enough to bet on the DWP three years ago, and, and not go down the road of deregulation or strategic partners, we, we now are, find ourselves in the invalid position of having a modest amount of surplus power in the middle of the winter and adequate power supply, and we have been making our surplus power available to the rest of the state on terms that earn us some reasonable profits. And that's the situation that exists as we, as we speak. We continue to provide electricity. We are aware of the fact that some of the people that were on top of the mountain four years ago, when we were down, are now down themselves, namely the Edison Company and PG&E and San Diego Gas and Electric. We take no joy in their troubles. Indeed, we hope that, and are working very hard with the key people in the state legislature and the governor's office, to keep them from going into bankruptcy, so that they will be able to pay their bills to the ISO and the PX, in turn, will be able to continue to make the payments to us. No one has yet fallen behind on payments to us, but we are very concerned, and we've been working on a daily and hourly basis with the Senate Leader, Senator Burton, and with Mr. Hertzberg, our, the Assembly Leader from here, and from our own representatives, Rod Wright, Chairman of the Assembly Committee, and Deborah Bowen, and we have assurances from all these folks that they will see to it that LA's bills are paid in due time, but we have 14 other private companies that are selling power to the state of California that are also owed a whole lot more money than we are, and they're continuing to make sales. So the situation is tense, but there is a workable plan that some Speaker Hertzberg has crafted together. I was up there with them until nine o'clock last night, going over the details. I'm persuaded if they can get that plan through the legislature, that they will be able to solve the financial situation. And our, by far, best chance of getting every penny owed us paid is to, for the legislature to enact the plan that they have in mind, where the state will be buying power and lending its credit and obtaining some assets in return from the utilities. So that's, I report to the council, and we continue to make the electricity available. We are very much aware that there is a danger of default, but the best chance, in my personal opinion, of our, getting our money back, is to continue to keep selling electricity so that they don't go into bankruptcy, and that is an opinion apparently shared by companies as wide-ranging, and as greedy as Enron, and Reliant, and all the other generators that are cleaning up, but they continue to sell and extend their credit. So that's where we are.
Okay, Mr. Deaton, did you want to add something?
I'd just like to say that they, we're in a unique situation, I think, with all due respect to everybody who wants to take credit. The council, I think, at the beginning, from a legislative standpoint, ensured that municipal utilities, including ourselves, were exempted from deregulation in the original AV-1890, and subsequent to that time, has been greatly involved in this plan to provide for the city to have power, and as a result of that, we find ourselves in a, both a very good position for our citizens, but also a situation where I think we have to be a good citizen of the state, and we have to keep both of those objectives in mind at the same time. And I think that Councilwoman Lanter's motion does that by stating that we recognize that we are a part of the state, and we do not want to back off the power, providing power to the, to the state grid. On the other hand, we need to make sure the interest of our customers and our citizens are financially are taken care of, and that financial, that eventually, at the end of the day, we get paid, and, but at the same time, that we're maintaining our responsibilities to the power grid of the state as a whole. And I think as long as we keep, it is a, the council should take a position of balancing those two, those two issues, those two objectives, and send a message to Sacramento that both are important to us, and that we recognize our, we represent, we recognize our position in the state and want to be helpful.
Madam Chair, may I introduce our manager of power, Henry Martinez, who is in charge of the day-to-day activity of actually making these sales, and has presided over the successful marketing over an 18-month period that has netted us quite a bit of money.
Thank you for being here. I have a couple of council members who want to speak, so we're going to see if, what they have to say, and we may need you for responses. Mr. Holden is first.
Madam President, and members, and Mr. Freeman, Mr. Freeman, I do personally have some concern about your judgment as relates to protecting DWP ratepayers. Now, I know what you say, and it sounds good, but what you do, it causes me much, much more concern. For example, you just mentioned Enron is a, is a greedy energy producer. Now, you know, I have a list of people who contributed significantly, energy-producing people, Edison, Edison International, to you. Now, my concern is, how do you separate your judgment from protecting us, and then protecting, aspiring, aspiring to protect them? For an example, I mean, you wrote a letter to Peace, Senator Peace, saying we should join the ISO, Independent Systems Operator. When we already took a position as a city policy, that should not be the case. Therefore, no letter should have been written that would contain that kind of information without you coming to the council. I think that that, to me, causes a lot of concern. You also talked about, you since, you were quoted in another correspondence, where you were the expert representing DWP. Now, you got to be honest about the information you provide. When I first met with you, I said, "Just tell me the truth, and you'll have no problem with me." As Mr. Deaton already mentioned, AB-1890, the position that we took, it came before my committee, and I said, "There's no way are we going to be included in a deregulation program which affects DWP." Mr. Freeman, at that time, was not even an employee of the City of Los Angeles. And yet, if the word go out, if you would believe that which we read in the newspapers or watch on TV, is Mr. Freeman who kept us out of that ruckus. Not true. And since that is not true, it bothers the heck out of me when you say to Peace, and you know what the ISO is, a bad operation. Dear Honorable Senator Peace, Steve Peace, it says, "This last fall, I promised you that we would make a good faith effort to join the ISO. We have done so through serious negotiation with Terry Winter." We don't know who that is. The enclosed letter sets forth the principles of an agreement that I believe Terry can live with. "We would appreciate your help in getting, quote, 'the rest of the crowd to go along.'" Who wants to go around with a crowd of Steve Peace, who's in shaft at San Diego, and that legislation that they approved?
Okay, Mr. Holden, thank you. Let's check.
Actually, I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Deaton.
Actually, I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Deaton. Also, for Mr. Freeman to know that there are members of the council who, in fact, feel very fortunate that there's been some very excellent foresight and planning and vision coming out of the leadership of DWP. In terms of the new charter and intergovernmental relations and communicating, in terms of other legislative bodies, I remember quite a few discussions about this as we were implementing the charter. So I'm very much in support of what's before us. I think it's a very good and responsible position to take, protecting our ratepayers and being good members of the state family. But are we then passing this recommendation on to the mayor, who is the official spokesperson for the city in these affairs?
Twofold. One is that we're passing this on to the mayor as a policy for the city, which, under the new charter, the responsibility of the mayor and the council jointly make that policy decision for the city. And then, secondly, when I assume that, given the balance between the financial interest and the partnership issues I expressed, that if the mayor agrees with that, then yes, then his office would be the spokesperson on the issue in Sacramento.
And if there's a disagreement between this policy, if we pass it today and the mayor's perspective?
The procedure from a city point of view is that then the mayor would veto it, and then the council would -- he would come back to the council. But I have --
Well, I'm hoping that we all agree.
I think that in my conversations with the mayor's staff, that the concern about the statewide interest, as well as the financial interest of the customers, et cetera, are the two issues that are his concern as well. So I'm anticipating that there won't be a difference in this view.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chik. The chair recognizes President Pro Tem Galanter.
I think there were a couple of people. The ones?
You're up.
All right. The reason I brought the motion in is a couple of things. First of all, you'll recall that the council is the official governing body of the city. And I think it's important for the city -- thank you. For the city council to be on record with a position on this. This is obviously an issue of enormous consequence to the entire state. And some years ago, when our economy was in worse shape than the rest of the state and a lot of people around the state were saying things like -- they would start all their sentences with "Unlike Los Angeles." And I reminded them that if LA's economy falls apart, the state's economy falls apart. The reverse is also true. And I think that the important -- first important message we want to get across to Sacramento because there's been a somewhat different message floating around up there over the last few days. And we need to correct any misunderstandings or misimpressions that may be out there in Sacramento. The first thing we need to get across to people is, we understand that we are all part of the same economy, and our economic fortunes are inextricably linked with the rest of the state. So it's our goal, and the purpose of my motion is to make clear to the state legislature and the governor that it's our goal to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. At the same time, we do have an obligation to our ratepayers and customers, the owners of the company, to make sure that we stay solvent and that we are not dragged down by what else has happened. We're trying to drag the rest of the state back up, not the other way around. But I think the most important message that people in Sacramento need to hear from this city is that we acknowledge and we are proud to be a part of the state of California, and we are not trying to turn our backs on the rest of the state or insulate ourselves from the need to resolve this problem. So the purpose of the motion, as everyone has said so far, is really twofold. It's to acknowledge that we have responsibilities to our customers and that the state has responsibilities to us so we can meet our responsibilities to our own customers. But at the same time, it's to get across, to correct any misunderstandings that may have existed, that we are all a part of California. And I forget who it was, but I'm sure Mr. Deaton will tell me. We must all hang together or we'll all hang separately. Is that Patrick Henry? I can't remember. I don't think it was Yogi Berra. I think this one is actually not Yogi Berra, but it's true all the same.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had, I think it was coincidence, but the luck of being in Sacramento a couple of days last week on League of Cities business. And as I was at the board meeting and roaming around the Capitol, I heard nothing but energy, 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 energy. It's all the only thing that's on people's minds up there. And I had one question for Mr. Freeman, and he may choose not to answer. But all these folks in other parts of the state that are asking for our help, not just in state government, but other municipalities, other utilities, are these the same people who cry foul every time Los Angeles needs a little bit more water?
Not necessarily. I mean, there are some of them, right, our next-door neighbors that would like us to serve them, that are in the same water problem as we're in.
That's another issue that I want to get to, not just on the water issue, but our neighbors that are asking us for electricity. But, I mean, I support the motion, definitely. I think it's the responsible thing to do. Some of the political advice that's going around Sacramento is, "Don't touch this issue with a ten-foot pole because it's political suicide," depending on how this may blow up in the future. But it's the responsible thing to do, for us to lend a helping hand to the rest of the state. But at the same time, as has been said before, today, we need to do it in a way that doesn't hurt Los Angeles or compromise Los Angeles for the people who live and pay the water rates and the power rates in the city of Los Angeles. But I do think that one opportunity we may have, this may be a long shot, but that's what you've been hired for, is to pursue a possibility that as we help contribute to the rest of the state, not only economically and in terms of energy, but are there opportunities to lock in some interest in the long term for water? Because we continue to be a city that grows, and our demands for not only energy, but water also continues to grow. So that's something I think we can take a look at and maybe discuss further at another point in time. Another thing that we can do in terms of being a good neighbor and, at the same time, doing something that's in the interest of the city, is to look at the efficiencies. I read your quotes in the paper that said, "The only way we can benefit in the long term, in terms of selling surplus energy back to the grid, is to have permanent, long-term reductions or dependencies on energy within the city of Los Angeles." And in that light, I wanted to mention two ideas. One is a motion that I was introduced earlier in today's meeting, and that is to expand on a pilot project which is about to be launched to replace some of our traffic signals with LEDs. Much more efficient, reduces costs all the way around. And if that, again, reduces our dependency on energy or we operate more efficiently, it gives us more flexibility. Another idea, working with our colleague Jackie Goldberg in Sacramento, I know she's fleshing out legislation to pursue pilot programs to implement more efficient, more modern technology refrigerators in the homes. Because we know, on the average, nearly thirty percent of somebody's utility bill --
She learned it from DWP.
Nearly thirty percent of a residential bill comes from the energy used to render a refrigerator. And finally, I think to make the statement that hasn't been said, we have heard talk about West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, other cities within and near Los Angeles now wanting to talk to us about the Department of Water and Power supplying energy to them. But we know the limitations in state law. I'd like you to speak to that a little bit because it may make sense in the short term, but we've got to watch the long term.
If you want him to speak to it, you have to stop because you're over your time.
Those were excellent suggestions, and we're involved in both the traffic-light pilot program and the refrigeration pilot program. And I'm having discussions with these neighboring cities. We do not have authority under the law to serve at retail in those communities without opening our market, which we are all opposed to.
And just to reiterate on that, the, under AV-1890, if a -- each city has to decide on its own a franchise for both gas, electric, and utilities. In the instance of West Hollywood or San Fernando or Beverly Hills, they have -- their franchise is with Southern California Edison. Under 1890, if we were to provide retail or retail, industrial retail, commercial, or residential services in those cities, then we would automatically be saying that we would allow other people to serve power in our city. So therefore, we would be subject to deregulation and --
But they can all form a utility district and buy power from us.
On a wholesale basis.
On a wholesale basis, right.
That's right. They are in a position to do that. They have to, in their -- in that instance, though, they have to make a decision to obtain vehement a domain or otherwise the distribution system. And other cities, cities, there are cities in the state that do that, Anaheim, Riverside. And they also buy -- they, in those, in both those instances, they are also partners with us in the Intermountain Power Project.
Mr. Holden, my friend, was talking about judgment tonight. I know that he's received a dollar or two, and I hope he separates his decision-making from that dollar or two. And I know he does that quite well. And even though he's not the general manager of DWP, he is part of this policymaking body. And I kind of bring that up because we have made about $260 million in this crisis. And the question is, what are we doing with it? Could you tell me?
Buying down the debt.
Buying down the debt. Is that entirely what we're doing with it?
Yes, sir. I mean, it goes to the bottom line, which is to reduce our debt.
Right. Now, is part of that debt also encumbered to the state of California?
No.
Not a penny of it?
No. We have reduced our debt. It was 4.1 billion when I got here. It's 1.4 billion today. And it was pursuant to an action plan that Councilwoman Galanter ordered me to come up with in ninety days, and which we did, and the council approved, and we've carried out that plan.
Now, the reason I want to say that is because when I say we've made about $260 million in this crisis, is that's kind of the view in Sacramento. I was also in Sacramento last week, and the reality is, people are threatened by this energy crisis. It's not just the politicians, it's people in general. And it's hard to sit there saying, "Well, I live in DWP land, I don't have to worry about it." And it's because I do have to worry about it. This energy crisis is facing us as a nation, but particularly in the West Coast. And a lot of it had to do with our actions on deregulation, not necessarily our departments, but with the state. And that's where we're at today. And so from my perspective, I support the motion, but I also wanted to introduce a concept about what to do with part of these profits. And the concept was to set aside some of that money for purposes of helping our residents to continue to reduce the use of their energy. And it's because they're the ones who are also going to be hit by the natural gas crisis when dealing with a gas company. And so today, we heard some innovative ideas that we've already been implementing, but maybe we can expand it more and actually become active in trying to reduce the energy use of Angelenos as a whole. Because that way, they also benefit as ratepayers in the long run. And I think Mr. Freeman has talked about it. And I just want to kind of introduce the concept because we have a necessity to participate at the state level because we're part of that family. But at the same time, our family needs to have assurances that in the long run, it's being as conservative as possible when it comes to the use of energy, because that's what's going to help them on their day-to-day bill.
Wait till they try those lipos. All right, I have -- okay, go ahead. I have three more people who haven't been heard yet, and Mr. Holden wants to be heard again. Go ahead.
Just, and I think that's a very good use of the money. However, the reduction of the debt, long term, will be the most significant thing that you can do for the residents of the city of Los Angeles as it relates to power. You are reducing the cost because that debt has to be carried on a per-kilowatt basis, number one. Number two, we're going to get further down the line here. Things will change. And as we, the first part of this motion is, we're going to be a good neighbor. I may be wrong, and I may be cynical, but they're not, if this was, the roles were reversed with these big companies, they would not be standing in line to help us. We need to be in a position to take care of ourselves, to reduce our debt, so our power is cheap relative to anybody else's, and we're in a position to provide that power to our citizens in a reasonable fashion. That will help them more in the long term because this is a fluid situation. It will change, and it'll change against us for a while.
Okay. Now, we are down to ten members, so please don't anybody else leave. Mr. Pacheco is next, then Mr. Ridley Thomas, then Mr. Sivornich, and then Mr. Holden again. Go ahead.
Madam President, colleagues, as I review the motion, I understand the gist of it in terms of wanting to be good neighbors. But I do want to remind people that not so recently, the state as an institution, the legislature, did basically take roughly $216 billion from municipalities to balance their budget. And that in the most recent legislative session, they gave back a token amount of $200 million. And they're not looking to look, to use their budget surplus to bail out the energy, these energy companies. But I think in this relationship, there should be some talk and some consideration about if we're going to be good neighbors. If we're being asked to be good neighbors, then maybe they should return more of the money they took from the municipalities during that time crunch, since they now have a budget surplus. And I really believe that this is the time to look at this relationship that we have with the state and our responsibilities and their joint responsibility in improving this relationship so that we both come out of this in a positive fashion. I just raise that as an issue because I think sometimes when we look at the crisis in front of us, we forget about the history that we've experienced as a municipality in terms of the funds that we need to deliver services to the citizens of this city and all municipalities in the state that are being asked to assist the state in getting through this crisis. So I just want to raise that to Mr. Deaton and Mr. Freeman as they negotiate and discuss this with the state, that we are good neighbors and we intend to be good neighbors, but there is also some responsibility when you accept our help in this venture, when you've taken $216 billion from the municipalities, that there should be some strong effort to return those funds to us and the other municipalities in the state.
My position is that they owe us every nickel that they owe us, and they're going to pay us. We're not an elamocenary institution, and we're getting, I'm getting promises, and that's our purpose, to get repaid.
Can you spell eliamocenary? I don't think I can, never mind. Sorry. Mr. Ridley Thomas is next.
I don't get to answer questions, remember?
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I move the previous question on the whole nine yards.
All right. Well, we have Mr. Sivornich, who hasn't spoken, and Mr. Holden has spoken only once. We can open the roll and see what happens. Open the roll, close the roll.
Nine i's, eight i's, two n's.
All right. So it actually does take ten, since they haven't all spoken twice. So Mr. Sivornich is next.
Mr. Sivornich spoke three times, Madam President, I'm sure of that.
Yeah, but he gets another three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Just a couple of questions in regards to, I would want to, of course, also want to be a, quote, "good neighbor" to the state in regards to this issue. But Mr. Deaton makes a very good point. Mr. Pacheco made a very good point. But I do think the motion in and of itself is meritorious, and we should move forward. The only questions I do have is that I remember half a dozen years ago, when the Department of Water and Power was exploring some of the strategic partnerships and was serving on the committee with the council, President Pro Tem, and being part of the discussions, I remember very well the private sector utility companies licking their chops that the DWP was going to be their next victim. And Mr. Deaton's point is very well taken. I think that the only thing that is indeed, has leveraged us to the place that we are, is that we took a road that I think was both prudent and rational. And we knew very well at that time that the city of Los Angeles, the council itself, was going to determine when we were going to open up our markets to competition. And we put off that vote to see how this all was going to hash itself out. And I believe that was some of the gains that we legislatively won in regards to the drafting of maybe 1890, was it not, Mr. Deaton?
That's true.
Okay. And so I remember the council discussion on this floor years ago when it said deregulation will happen in the city of Los Angeles when the city council takes that vote to deregulate. And fortunately, I think we did not make the decision at that time to do it based upon advice from both the general manager of Water and Power and from the CLA to wait and see how the market worked out. So the --
So the question that I do have today is that, in our wanting to continue to sell power to the state power grid, I want to be reassured that we're not throwing good power after bad money, that we have reassurances that we will be repaid, because those payments are going to go to continue to pay down our debt, which is going to make us more competitive when this is all hashed out again, and we find ourselves in the heat of competitive battle with the private utility companies. And also, I would also like to be reassured, either from Mr. Deaton or Mr. Freeman, is that if indeed we go ahead and make the power available when necessary, that we are indeed not putting at risk any customers in the Department of Water and Power for us not being able to face blackouts, or brownouts, or rolling brownouts, that indeed the power that we are going to be selling is surplus. And based upon what we should project our power needs will be over the course of the next weeks and months, because I believe that fluctuates.
I can give you absolute assurance--
If I could just get those two questions answered.
I can give you absolute assurance on your last point. We are selling only when we have surplus over and above the reserves we need to meet our native load, and we sell only these old, from these old gas-fired plants, which are our most expensive plants, and we keep all of the lower-cost power for the people of Los Angeles. So I can give you complete assurance on the last point. The first two points, those are what we're seeking to achieve. There is no certainty, but our best chance of getting repaid and paid is to work with the legislature to avoid these investor-owned companies going into bankruptcy. And there is a reasonable likelihood that that will succeed. And the state is in the process of lending its credit to seeking that outcome.
All right. We're ready for round two. Mr. Holden.
I think that you should have listened, some of my colleagues, to what Mr. Sivornich said, and take it quite seriously. Number one, the headline in yesterday's paper, "Power Firm Demands Utility Pay Bill Now." Suppliers Say It Will Haul Edison and PG&E Into Bankruptcy Court If The Money Isn't Forthcoming. Aren't we paying any attention? Do you know the IS, ISO that we've given them energy, surplus energy? They owe us $130 million? How are they going to pay the $130 million when they're being hauled into bankruptcy? Is anybody paying any attention? I mean, this is not motherhood and apple pie-type legislation to propose to before you? You're being tricked again. You have Edison, PG&E, Southern, San Diego Gas and Electric, sold their energy-producing plants to the suppliers, who's saying, "What happened to the money? That they were derived from there? Did Edison International get it? How much was it? Aren't we paying attention? And yes, not too long ago, Edison was the first in line to take over the operation of DWP, and there was a lot of members of the council saying, "Let them do that." You better be careful. These are the ratepayers. $130 million are the ratepayers' money. Now, Ms. Galanter, the second part of your original motion should go to committee. I think you agree to that.
Second part, yes.
Yes. Okay, fine.
The second part of the original motion goes--
Right. Now, if we, I'd like to add something to what you have before us. For an example, explore at the opportunity of providing surplus energy to our neighboring cities like Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, et cetera, et cetera, should be a part of this motion.
I'm all in favor of doing that, but I don't think it should be part of this motion. I think it should be a separate motion. Mr. Yaroslavsky, I know, has already proposed it, and I'm meeting with him next week about it. But the, I'm very supportive of it. I just think we should leave this motion alone, because we're trying to send a simple message to Sacramento.
Okay, then I think what you have to include, if you don't want to veto, is the fact that they owe $130 million already. That's number one. Number two, that this motion that you put in should say, "However you provide the energy, however, DWP ratepayers should be adequately compensated for the surplus energy that they are providing." That's not a part of your motion.
Yes, it is. If you look at the very last phrase, it says, "Without compromising the interests of its customers," which I thought was a somewhat less belligerent way of saying exactly the same thing.
I said they should be compromised. Well, you want an "I" vote, fine. I think they should be compensated--
Well, it's up to you, Mr. Holden. You can vote against this message if you want.
I think it should be spelled out, which clearly understood, "Compromising." What does that mean? You've got to negotiate compromise. What's the definition of compromising? Well, we gave you 500 kilowatts, and you wanted 300. What are you talking about? Well, they have adequately compensated for the energy that they provide. You accept that, you got a good deal. Otherwise, it's going to be vetoed anyway.
Mr. De--
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Deaton.
Well, I'd like just to say, I think that as far as staff is concerned, we look at the words "compromising" as being the financial impact, and that, what was, and the spirit of what's being said by the, all members of the council that I've listened to, is that we are going to balance the good neighbor, and we believe that we have to have our financial files in order. And I, and I don't think there's any doubt in any of our minds of what the message is. And, Mr. Holden, we've been pretty consistent in protecting the city.
I know, but it's not, you spell that, and you know that.
But I know how to read between the lines, too.
Okay. All right. It's Mr. Pacheco's turn.
Madam President, colleagues, I was simply going to ask that we amend, just for clarity's sake, that anywhere we put the word "provide" surplus electricity, it should really just say "sell." I mean, I just want to make it really clear that we're not giving away--
Oh, yeah. And it does say "sell," actually.
Well, I just want to make it real clear, as a friendly amendment, anywhere the word "provide" shows up, the word "sell" should be--
It actually, I appreciate that, and it's fine with me. It actually says, "Continue to sell surplus power." Mr. Ridley, now, hold on. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I thought I would change my position--
Where are you?
If I were to change my position under the circumstances, maybe we'd be more successful. With your permission, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
I second the motion instead of closing. All right. There seems to be no one else who wants to be heard, so debate is now closed. We need to do two things. We need to thank the two gentlemen from DWP and note and file their report. We'll open the roll on that, close the roll.
Wait, wait, wait. What did you say then?
I said, "We need to thank them." And you don't have to thank them if you don't want to. We're going to note and file their report. That's all we're doing right now. See, I think you should probably vote yes on that one. Open the roll on that, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. And on item 38, as amended--
That means the original motion is not being--
The second, right. Then, Mr. Holden is correct. There were two bullet points in the original motion in the moving clause. The second one, which talks about a state power authority, should be sent to committee. That'll go to Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources. The first, and intergovernmental, well, if we get that far. It certainly, all right. And the first one is amended by the, is changed by the amendment that's here. So open the roll on item 38, as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right. That's still approved. Fourth with on that, please. Yes, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
To acknowledge your leadership on this matter, as Chair of Energy, Commerce, and Natural Resources, seems to me that it is precisely that sort of forward-thinking that helps our departments do what they need to do, and that would otherwise not be the case were not for our doing so. And so I think when we can evidence, working together with the departments and providing the best thinking possible, our city is better off, and in this instance, our state will be better off. So I think we owe you acknowledgement for that.
Well, thank you for your kind words. What am I going to owe you for this one?
Well, you'll see soon.
I guess so.
Now, I'll take Mr. Freeman and give him his compliments, otherwise.
All right. Thank you. We do have 10 members present, and we have a few items, we have several items in closed session that we need to deal with. Some of those, I'm told, can be continued, but unfortunately, not all of them. And 27 is still on the desk. That was the REAP issue in Mr. Holden's district. Mr. Holden continues to recommend that we include the property in REAP, as is listed on the agenda. So open the roll on item 27, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Holden, you're not voting no on item 27, are you? Okay. I just want to make sure I got the right roll up here. Okay, open the roll on 27, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. That's approved. And that should bring us to the closed-session items. So for those of you who are not involved in the closed-session items, I need to ask you to depart, so the council can recess to confer with legal counsel.
Actually, this is the time also for--
And while we're at it, we'll have public comment on items not on today's agenda. I do not have any cards. So if I don't see anybody in the next two seconds, that public hearing is closed.
Council has motions for posting and referral on the desk.
All right. Let's post and refer the motions.
And also, there are several excuses. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Tuesday, March 6th, city business meets council policy.
Okay, that's approved. Unanimous vote.
And Councilmember Wax requests to be excused, city business, Friday, January 19th, to leave at 1:30, excuse me, 11:30, and that needs a motion.
All right. Mr. Pacheco moves. Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk.
Okay, but we haven't cleared the room yet, so we're still here. Okay, we're back. Item 39F.
Settlement in the Case of Leo versus City of Los Angeles, Joseph Gonzalez and Ron Lopez, in the amount of $115,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that. And item 40.
Item 40 is approval of outside counsel in two cases, and authorizing drawing of demand on sewer construction and maintenance fund.
All right. Open the roll on item 40, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that as well. And I believe the desk is clear.
Yes, Madam President. And the remainder of the closed-session items are continued to Friday, January 19th.
Oh, right. I forgot that. All those other things, yes. So we'll try to hold a quorum for longer on Friday. All right. The desk is clear. Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions, yes, we do. I'm sorry. The audience and the members, please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a motion to ask the council to adjourn in memory of O. Ray Watkins, who passed away on December 28, 2000. He was 71 years old, died of natural causes. He was the owner of Compton Bulletin News, a community newspaper, brother of Pastor Billy Watkins from Freedom of Spirit Brothers and Sisters Relationship Ministry, which is located in Ninth Council District. He is survived by his wife, Jacqueline. Watkins also leaves four sons, three daughters. He also leaves his brother, Pastor Billy Watkins.
Anybody else? Thank you. We are adjourned. See you on Friday.[1762.28]